And Bentley's out there working and so we appreciate your comments, but we're happy with what George, with what Mr. Bentley's doing.
And that's absolutely nothing.
Cox doing. Anyway, he's doing plenty because it's getting done.
Absolutely.
Commissioner Roland, would you like to interject because I know you've been keeping up with some of it as well. There's a lot more than just the concrete left to do, correct?
Oh, yeah. There was, there was, the building as a shell put together was virtually 100% complete. There was a pretty fair amount of rough end work, but anybody in construction knows that the majority of the expense and majority of the work is with the finish. And typically in the heat and air business, we do 60/40. 60 is rough end and 40% is finish. I'm sure most other trades feel the same way. And so, you know, we could go round and round with the thing was virtually finished. I could sit here and tell you the tons of things that have been done since, since the county manager's taken over if it makes any difference to you. But fact is, it's getting done. Bentley is an integral part in it. He is a general contractor, which is what we needed from the beginning. We are, we are commissioners. We should not be in the business of building buildings. We should let professionals do that, and that's what we did. And I believe that you put a professional in charge and you let him do the job and get out of his way and let him do it. I can't, I can't stress that enough. And the, the fire station is, is moving, moving forward. I said it would be done probably by the end of the year, but according to, to Mr. Hedges, he, he thinks we can get done even sooner. And the main thing is get it done and get our firemen in there and get to work.
Absolutely.
Let me say this. Corrections, corrections is doing the work. The interior finishing.
And they messed up enough.
They ain't messed up nothing. They'll cost any county about $70 a week.
Look what they did at the.
I'm gonna call this, we gotta move on. I'm gonna call the question on this. You've made your changes, Janet, have you got the changes, Janet, I mean Larry's?
What change? Was you just?
He said that Larry Evans instead of he.
Yeah.
All right. You've got those changes. We've got a motion to approve the minutes with those changes. I've got a second on that from Commissioner Roland. Is that correct?
Mm-hmm.
I call the question. All in favor? Any opposed? None? Okay, the minutes passed. All right, next item is the bat wing mower. Junior, are you here? Road superintendent, come on up.
I'll start this off if you don't mind. We have three bat wing mowers. We have a Bush Hog that's 15 foot. It's in fair condition. It's eight years old. We bought a brand new one, Woods 15 foot this year. And the third one is a Tiger brand. It's worn out. It was purchased in 2004, 15 years old. The Tiger main center gearbox failed. We got an estimate of $3,200 to repair. And according to Junior, it ain't worth fixing. We got three estimates, one for a Woods bat wing and two for John Deere. The Wade Tractor Company bid on the Woods, $16,161. Lassiter Tractor out of Unadilla bid on a John Deere, $18,000. And Sun South from Barnesville, John Deere 15 foot for $20,000. Funding would have to come out of the 2020 splotch funds. Mr. Chairman?
Okay. Got a recommendation from the county manager to approve the, or authorize the purchase of the Woods heavy duty bat wing. What's the pleasure of the board?
I make a motion we approve.
Got a motion to approve, Commissioner Roland. Got a second from Commissioner Ambrose. Any discussion?
You've had experience with these wooden mowers and they're a lot better than the John Deere.
Okay. Wow. You on record on saying that?
I did talk real quick with, with somebody that does regular work and maintenance on one. They said 2004 with what we, what wear and tear we put on it, it is probably worn out and they, they certainly recommended the Woods mower. And that's not who you're buying it from. That's just somebody that works on them.
All right. Here no further discussion. I'll call the question. All in favor? Any opposed? That motion passes unanimously. All right, thank you, June. Next item on the agenda is the T-splotch resolution. Mr. Vaughn, just as a side note, our county attorney is, is out of town today and not here with us, but Jim, if you would.
Sure. We started this process back in, in April. There's a very tight timeline that goes along anytime you have to call for a referendum. We have completed meeting with the municipalities. We have a signed intergovernment agreement. So the next thing to do would be for the Board of Commissioners to vote to call for the referendum. In your packet, not only is the resolution, which is rather lengthy, this has to be turned over to the registrar within a certain time period. They have to meet, the chairman will be involved in that meeting. Everything has to be to the registrar by the 7th of August. That's 90 days before the general election on November 5th.
Okay.
So the recommendation is to proceed with the approval of the resolution of the Board of Commissioners of Monroe County to call for a referendum on November the 5th for the vote from the public for transportation special purpose, local option sales tax. Mr. Chairman?
I move.
Go ahead.
I move the motion that we call for the referendum.
Got a motion to approve that. Got a second from Commissioner Amami. Any discussion?
Yeah, I got a discussion. I just happened in the office when they were evaluating the roads, excuse me, I got a little cold, that, that Mr. Hedges and Junior were evaluating the roads and Mr. Hedges was calling out the roads and Junior was giving them a rating just off of his, his basic knowledge, which from riding the roads like I ride them too. There were no measurements done on the roads as to the deterioration of the roads, what the conditions were, just basically from memory. And quite a few roads were left off. And especially in my district, Mitchell Road and Freeman Road, several, you did not go down the, just the list of every road, did you not? And did you do it as I just mentioned?
I did.
Exactly right. Well, this is what, this is what I find troubling. The roads, when we, when we evaluate a road before, before we go and determine whether it's deteriorated enough to, to go ahead and, and, and work it, we go and look at it. I've got a, I've got a measurement wheel, a walking wheel, and go out and just look and see where it is. On your, on your evaluation, you took the whole roads just on a rating, which in most cases, all of these roads do not need and will not deteriorate to the point of doing the whole thing. So what I'm saying, the evaluation was totally improper.
Commissioner Evans, this was not an evaluation to determine how much of the roads were to be resurfaced. It was to come up with a list of projects. And that's what we've come up with, 152 different projects. And whether it will be a, a full depth reclamation, whether it will just be resurfacing, it is a road determined by the road superintendent that needs some attention. That's what we had to come up with. That's what T-splotch requires is to determine a list of projects. We have a list of projects. There has been no detailed engineering or detailed evaluation of those roads, but they are roads determined by the road superintendent that need to be addressed if the T-splotch is approved.
Well, I wanted in the record that it should have been done professionally. And that is, we go out and evaluate the roads and not just set up from memory, you know. And I treasure Junior, and Junior's been here almost as long as I am. And normally how we do the roads is you measure. If the road needs, half of these roads could do with a strip job. And I say a strip job, just the portion that has deteriorated. If it's turned to an alligator strip right in here and the rest of the road is mortified and in perfect shape, why do you go and do the same through the entire road? That is my point. Same point we made about Juliette Road. And Juliette Road is in pretty good shape. You put it on there for five or six miles, the remainder of the way. But this was totally done wrong.
Am I correct, Mr. Hedges, in the fact that we came up with this list and/or at that time, those roads can be done less or more and other roads can be added?
Yes, sir. What was the purpose? Tell me, or help us determine, because you and I've had this conversation, so I'm just gonna, we're just gonna have it again, okay? What was, what was the purpose for outlining the roads that we outlined? I mean, we, the purpose was, well, I mean, we had to have something to, to, some guideline to go by to generate the need for a T-splotch, correct?
Correct.
And actually, you and I sat down and, and I've talked with Junior as well, and I have ridden every road that was on my list. And I've, I've told Junior I'm making a list of it, and it may be a two mile road. And Commissioner Evans is right. Maybe only a mile of that needs paving, and we certainly don't want to pave the other mile, but we're gonna have the flexibility, provided this passes, to make those changes within that budget, correct?
That's correct.
And that includes the roads that weren't added on there. But the reason for this is because the money we've got right now, we can't even fix the roads. We couldn't even fix five roads right now.
Correct.
I mean, we just don't have the money. There's no way to get the money for it. And our roads are deteriorating so fast with this last couple of years of rainy weather. This is the only way we can come up with money to fix what we've got, and that's not gonna get them all.
Can I have a question?
What, what would it cost and what kind of resources would it take to do a full evaluation of every road in this county for the purpose of trying to pull up projects and get projects? I mean, if we're talking about measuring depth and, and, I mean, is there any idea what?
I wouldn't, I wouldn't have a clue. But I would refer to the documents in your handouts. There's one for the county, one for Colloden, and one for Forsite. The roads are not listed. It's street repair, bridge, right of ways, sidewalks, bicycle paths, construction of roads, streets, bridges, sidewalks, renovation, improvement, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera. The list of projects was something that's required under the law. Whether you do every one of those projects is to be determined.
But the money does have to be spent on the road project.
Only place it can be spent. So you had to go through the process of identifying the projects. The projects in the past could have been roundabouts, replacing of a bridge. This whole exercise, this T-splotch is resurfacing, full stop.
And short of raising the millage rate by five mils, this is the only way we can come up with the money to fix them.
Well, and for.
Fix this many roads.
To provide a report that's as encompassing as, as, you know, trying to evaluate every road in this county. What is it, 700 miles of road or something like that?
You're right.
So that, that would be extremely expensive and certainly not worth doing for what they were trying to do, which was basically just to, to, to get some idea of what condition. I mean, we only had, what, four different ratings, basically. So, I mean, I think the handling of the, the way that y'all went through that was completely and entirely appropriate.
Well, we've got a man that's been here 30 plus years, who's now our road superintendent. He's more familiar with these roads than any of us are. And I appreciate his opinion. And I would trust what Junior has to say about, about our roads and the condition of them and what needs to be repaired and what doesn't. He, he's out there every day, eight hours plus a day, working on them, you know. So if he, and he gives that information to county manager, puts a project list together, and then on top of that, come, we know that once that project list is done and there's still funds left over or less that has to be done on those, we can, we can put them on other roads.
Ultimately, you gotta get through November and see do you have the money or not. Once you get there, and I may go, and I'll just give you a quick, short example. I was on Shire Road, okay? Shire Road, you're, you're right. The whole thing was, was slated to be paid. Well, all of it doesn't need to be paid, but right there adjacent to it, there's some on Moore Road that may need to, and down at the bottom, there's some on Zebulon. But as long as we got the flexibility to get the problems fixed and we can, we can work in, work within and outside of that to do that, I mean, we're, we're gonna make the right decisions.
I'm glad you brought up Shire Road. Shire Road, about half of it needs to be done. There's about three bad spots on Moore Road, Zebulon Road. I ride the roads, not just my district. I can tell you about.
Well, good. You and I both rode it, man.
Well, I'm just telling you this. We don't. And you, you put the whole road on there. That's, that is crazy. It's ridiculous. And this, if this money can be shifted, it should be placed where as the roads deteriorate, we can shift the money around from district to district.
That's one of the options we've got.
And you spelled it out, that you put it on the project list that it's supposed to be spent on that road.
No.
That's, that's.
No.
Do we have a final project list at this point?
No.
We don't have to finalize till after.
There's no project list, other than what you've reviewed. This is what you're calling the referendum.
We don't have to provide a list of projects right this time.
In Rogue County to resurface roads.
And we can allocate however we want.
Any way you want.
Well, let's, let's put that in writing.
It's already in writing, Larry. That's the whole point.
It does not list a road, period.
There's been enough discussion on this. I'm gonna call the question on approving the resolution. I just wanna make a note, I'd like to make one note that, see, we need to get this out to the public, that we can't repair the roads we got now. We haven't touched a road now close to two years because we don't have any funding for it. And short of going up five or six mils, this T-splotch will be helped paid by the people traveling up and down the freeway.
Correct.
And I think we need to know that. And this, we got to have it.
It would be helpful, I think. And forgive me, I'm sorry. I know you're trying to move on really quickly. If we could get a, a rough idea of the total amount of roads, the, the amount of depreciation that we would experience on average per, you know, per mile of road, and to have and establish a maintenance budget, you know, if we were gonna properly maintain our roads and, and not have, have to have huge lump sums come in, you know, but if we were gonna budget a maintenance program for every road in the county, to get some rough number of what that cost is. We all know, just from, from driving the roads and having the little bit of experience that we do with the funding of what we've got, we know for a fact that we're not funding it the way it should be. But we need to somehow help get that out to the public so that they can understand that if we continue the way it's going, our roads are, are not gonna, eventually, we're gonna wake up one day and go, we have the worst roads in, in, in the region, you know, and.
And we'll have to raise taxes.
That's where we're headed right now. And I don't think that, we've not been able to fully articulate exactly, you know, why and how that is. And I think if we could somehow get out some, some numbers to help people understand that we're, I mean, what we've been funding is a drop in the bucket for how many, how many miles of road do we have in this county?
And one thing I wanna add to that, that Jim and I, I actually talked with him this morning, just real quickly, is, is take a $200,000 house and, and, or $200,000 property and say, how much property tax, how much millage rate, how much, how many dollars would it take to do the same thing with that versus how many dollars would it take if you spend an average of $10,000 a year at the grocery store here in, in Monroe County? And, and let's balance that and let, let the taxpayers see it.
Here no further discussion. I'll call the question. All in favor? Any opposed?
We vote for it.
Resolution passes. Will you make that, make the necessary arrangements, Commissioner, County Manager Hedges? Next item on the agenda is the business licenses. I think we've got Sarah and Susan here today from the RC. Good to have y'all back. Appreciate y'all coming in.
So I'll just fast forward to some of the new items. There were, we received some questions about, the county manager asked about how much that some of the neighboring counties were making and about how many licenses. So Jones County receives about 225 renewal licenses every year, about 36 new licenses every year. So for the renewal licenses, they make about $28,000 and new licenses, about $6,300, for a total of $34,425. And so their rates, I believe, were about 125 flat and then 175 for new businesses. But the county does it a little bit differently. I believe it's around 125 for businesses with fewer than employees and then over 11 employees, it goes up another 100. So they generated about $40,500. Reached out to a few other counties, they cannot get that to me. So this is the information I have. This is what some of the neighboring.
Well, they're the closest to, in proximity, obviously, and also in, in population. So anyway.
And so one of the other questions that was raised was about a local business waiver, particularly for businesses that start in Jones County. I would not recommend doing a fee reduction or waiver for only local businesses. I think you're raising some inconsistent practices. It's just not best practice moving forward. One option you could do is you could do a welcome to Monroe County type of business waiver. So that could be for local businesses starting up or businesses moving into the county. The city of Forsite says that that is part of their incentive package, is they give a one-year waiver for business licenses that are coming into the city. The question for you all is, would this be altered for all the businesses next year?
Right. Okay.
And so those are the two questions that I think you all had. Are there any other things that we could answer?
Any questions for Sarah, for Susan? For Susan, for Sarah. Sorry. Make sure I, make sure I get that.
Go back to that last screen. Can you go back to that one word? So you're saying Jones County only has 225 businesses?
Renewals. You're right. And then they have new folks come in each year. So about 261 is according to that number. Do you know what they use the $34,000 or $40,000 for?
Saying they got 261 businesses.
It'd be more than that, doesn't it?
The general.
I'm sure there's more than that. They just don't buy license.
It just doesn't, it just doesn't jive those figures you got there. 225 renewals and 36 new ones. You look at 261 businesses in Jones County, so they're not requiring every business or they have.
Do they require it?
Oh, they require it, yeah. It's part of their ordinance.
Every business. That's mom and pop shops.
Doesn't mean that they're doing it. It just means that those are the folks that are following the law.
And if I remember correctly, she was saying that, you know, they send out about 300 of these every year, the renewal licenses. They get about 225. So they're, they're not necessarily getting all of the renewals, but they're also having a lot of businesses failing. There is no mechanism for businesses. They throw out businesses to report. So that's just kind of one of the ways they figure out. Like she said, on the average, since they started this, I believe in 2011, that that's how many renewal licenses that she receives back.
Is there a mechanism for people that just say, I'm just not gonna get a business license?
So, yeah, I mean, it can be an enforcement mechanism.
I'm saying, is there one in these or do none? How do they do that?
So that would require kind of going and inspecting the records to make sure that they have a business license. And that could result in a single lien on, on the businesses that do not pay it.
Well, I guess what I'm saying is, is if, if somebody's never had a business license, say, say we, say we do this this year, and next year, we have a guy that just says, I'm not gonna get a business license. I mean, Nipper says, I'm not, I don't know if you have to have one or not, but Nipper says, I'm not gonna get a business license. You know, he's not gonna come, he's not gonna come announce it to the commission that he's not gonna get one. He's just not gonna get one. So what's happening to you to go hunt him down and find him and say, hey, you gotta be compliant?
I mean, so for Jones County, I know that they'll use any of the permits that you apply for is one of the ways. And I'll say in fire code and building inspections, they have to go through commercial businesses. So that is one way to kind of find all of those businesses.
So if they come talk to you, you'll know to go get them. But if they don't come talk to you, you're not gonna know.
Yeah. So a lot of it is also, I know maybe it functions a lot off of kind of citizen complaints too. And then you're able to sit down and, and inspector. But a lot of it is also just driving around and seeing it. It's kind of a prayer to pull of things that happen. It will, people have businesses that start without one. But having the capacity or a person that can inspect and go out is, catches some of those.
The capacity.
Now, these business licenses require four residents and businesses that are stationed in Jones and, because my biggest concern is protecting our citizens against these damn gypsy contractors coming in here. That I want, I want some kind of license requirement and bonding fee on them because they screwing our residents out of a lot of money on shoddy work.
That isn't that when they go to get a building permit as way of getting that building permit, you can require them to present their license that shows that they are a, they maybe have a business license in a separate county, but you can require them to show you their business license or at least their contractor's license.
Can we require them to get a license for them to do any work here?
It's generally businesses that are, have a home base in Monroe County. You can't necessarily require them, when they come in for a temporary job, to get a business license because it is a typical.
And that's something we could ask Ben. Could we add it like a, when they go to get a building permit, tackle another $5,000 bond on them or something, or make sure they have it? Because we're losing, our people are getting really ripped off.
What about other exemptions? You've got young adolescents that are cutting grass for the summer, 13 to 19. I'd also like to see, and special needs individuals, they should be exempt. At our workforce development center, we look for, for jobs for special needs and individuals, and some are cutting grass and, and doing other things. And they are older than 19 years old.
And so the way that the ordinance is written is these types of exemptions are under the administration of Kelsey and Jim. So these are, these types of exemptions, the young adolescents they're sitting are not written into the ordinance. That is gonna be an interpretation of them because these are not regular businesses in the traditional sense. So, yeah, that is something, you know, to give guidance to them, that these are not people that we want to require businesses.
And the other problem I can see with that, there are some people that are actually not cutting grass for themselves for profits. They're out trying to help some special needs people. They'll take them to the site and let them work. They'll take them to the cemetery and they do this on a regular basis so that they getting money. That's, and that's gonna pose a problem. So I brought this up when we first started talking about business license, about the cutting grass. We've got 1,000 people around here trying to cut grass and they pick up kids and stuff like that. And they were cutting grass when I was back 60 years ago pushing around. But it's, that's, that's one thing that's gonna be hard to regulate. I don't see it.
Okay. Any other questions for Susan or for Sarah?
And I, I like the Forsyth model, just, just as a thought, of as far as costs go, if we're gonna proceed with this because Forsyth has, Forsyth has worked it and we won't, we're going to have to, if this passes, it's going to have to be spread out in another department or departments to, to work. So in other words, it would not be cost effective to pass this and hire an employee just strictly for that.
That's right. That's one of the thoughts I've got, Larry, is, is how much it'll generate. One quick question, too. For example, the city of Forsyth requires a license. Those folks already have it. They won't have to purchase a Monroe County license. So is that how it works? In Jones County, the city of Gray has one, things like that. That's one of, John, that's one of the reasons why the numbers on the businesses are so low, you know, is because.
As a matter of fact, if you've got, and Kelsey, you, you back me up because this happened. If you have a city license, you can't get a county license.
You're in the city.
If I'm in the city.
If you're in the city.
Because I wanted to get a county license. She said, you can't. You're in the city. I already, I had a city license. And I said, well, all I need is a license. So, but.
That's right.
She rebuked me.
This is not the only part. Like, it's only part of the law incorporated.
Okay. If y'all have no further questions, unless y'all, we get into a discussion about it, be ready. We appreciate y'all's time and effort, energy on this. I've already told Laura Mathis that y'all done a good job on it. And so, anyway, thank y'all for being here today. And so at this time, this is the second reader on the, on the, on this. So what's the pleasure of the board?
What, what would be our fee structure?
Well.
On this slide.
Oh, there it is.
So if you have flat fee structure, you're looking at Jones County.
Okay.
Hold on. The last slide.
Who's got it?
She does.
Okay. Well, she can put it up there and then you hit, and then you hit the button. It's all right. right. There it is, okay.
Just a minute, I got it. That was the recommendation.
There it is, okay.
First reading.
There's your recommendation on a possible motion. Doesn't have to be that, but there's really kind of two questions. First, do you think that we ought to do it and second, what the fee ought to be?
And so, the ordinance can be passed without specifying that the fee could be something that's by resolution so that it can be changed without having to go back and amend the ordinance?
I like the city of Forsyth.
That is more difficult to implement because we've got to figure out how many employees they've got, that would, something they would complete on the application as opposed to just keep it simple and go a flat fee.
Well, it's just a matter of taking their word for it, that's what Forsyth's doing. I mean, we, that's what we're gonna have to do. You're not gonna go out there and count how many employees they got, will we? Well, we're gonna have to take them at their word, they're honest business people and I don't see where it would be a problem, you know, when they fill out the application.
Why don't we get a motion on the, on the board if we're gonna move forward with it first before we discuss it?
I'm just, I'm not sold on it yet, so I'm not gonna motion.
It'd be easier to discuss, just.
Why would we discuss it if we're not gonna make a motion on it?
Well, I just have, I have a problem to even.
Make a decision before we talk about it.
It's just hard for me to, I mean, I can't, I can't motion to approve it, but I really wanna discuss it. I'll second it for discussion if somebody will.
How about I'll motion that we discuss this issue? I'll motion that we discuss this issue before we take any action item votes on it.
You got a motion to approve business licenses, is what your motion is, correct?
I don't think.
Wow.
I mean, if that's what you want, yeah, fair enough.
Got a motion from Commissioner Ambrose to approve business licenses.
And I will second for discussion.
All right, we're in discussion. Jake and Beck.
The problem is, you take five below with the employees they've got, they're gonna pay $175, then you got John Doe out here that does mechanical work, he's the only employee, that, that's a, that, that fee is kind of disproportionate.
I mean, a farmer that's incorporated, you know?
Agriculture's.
Doesn't have to be incorporated, he's still a business.
Jeff's got a comment.
He's sole proprietor. Sounds like Deputy Wilson'd like to make a comment, come on up.
Y'all might, we chime in on this.
Would you state your name and address for the record, please?
I can do that, Deputy Wilson, Monroe County, Jones. Man Kelsey's gone over quite a bit of this as far as businesses in the county. And it's more of a zoning issue that we're trying to speak with to get a lot of the mom and pops, bring businesses out of their homes while these homes are in residential areas. Most of us have our own houses. You, you're in River Falls. Now, if your next door neighbor starts working.